All right, thanks Evan always. Uh, I'm gonna go to trash, trash cards in the alleys. How do you like it?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to members of the board. On December tenth, two thousand thirteen, staff were either board directed with an update on pilot program that we did. Uh, we piloted, uh, seven alleys on, on the east side and those alleys were Esther Street, Hudson Avenue, Walnut Street, Abbey Way, Rambin Avenue, Ogilvy and East Eighteenth Street. And what the pilot party indicated that seventy percent of the residents responded faithfully, however, thirty percent went back to old habits and left their carts, uh, you know, blocking the alley or, or in, in, in public view. Um, at the time this report was presented, um, the staff, uh, the board was, uh, pleased with, with the results and they did not want to spend any more money on the pilot program, nor did they want erect signs at the end of the alleys. It would be expensive to put signs on, 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 on both ends of each hundred and twenty-six alleys. Um, so what staff recommend that we continue to print another story, uh, on the C M V newsletter and recommend that staff work with the city to have this issue placed on their Costa Mesa's, uh, minute video, on Costa Mesa TV and work with the city to see if we can get, um, a section on the fire department's website because it could potentially be a fire hazard if someone throws something out the window and the can down below, especially in the north of that family, uh, dwelling. Um, and for the board's, uh, direction, uh, staff will continue to educate, uh, the public and take the soft approach, um, with regards to enforcement.
Did you have any feedback from any of the residents as far as calls or, you know, about when you were doing the pilot program?
Actually, yeah, we did have, uh, a few when we roll out, when we just, uh, when we rolled out the story and, and a newsletter. Some, uh, uh, liked the fact that, uh, you know, we were taking a soft approach. Uh, it was, it was, and then we also had a few that didn't like it saying, this is good, we don't want the cart in the alley. So those who had their cart in the alley really liked it because they had a, uh, uh, issue with, with placement. Um, but so I would say it was a mixed, mixed bag with those types of comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, did you, any comments on it?
Um, no sir, just, just, uh, I guess piggyback with Javier. Um, you know, I, I did contact a few of the residents along Flower Street. Um, by the way, the, the plots are laid out, uh, the parcels are on that, you know, they don't have printage on, they have printage on the street, but the carts aren't placed on the street, they're placed in the alleyway. Uh, the way their yards are structured and the garages, um, doesn't give, you know, they would have their trash carts, you know, in their garden essentially. Um, so a lot of those folks were, you know, could give a commentary on, you know, it's kind of an unpopular thing. Uh, the majority of the folks do their best to minimize the carts from the public view. You know, if you're standing at the end of the alley looking towards, your, the majority of them are removed from public view. You know, if you're standing to the rear of the property, you know, then you may see the trash cart.
I think seventy percent are complying. This is gonna sound almost flippant, but seventy percent's not a bad term when people comply, sort of.
Right.
And, and the fact that, you know, how many alleys?
Hundred and twenty-nine.
To make a big deal out of it. And there's certain people that will point these things out to offenders, that people in the community that are pointing items out to us. Are you finished?
Oh.
Okay. Part of this is we got for, uh, trash services for disabled residents. Have we ever had anybody apply for that service?
We've had a fee, I believe, for those to C N R. They have a courtesy rollout program where if the resident is, is unable, um, to, to roll out the can, C N R driver will get off, uh, service account and, and put it back. Um, I believe it's a handful right now, it's not.
Yeah.
Not too many. We don't promote the program.
Yeah.
Uh, most, most seniors, well, what we realize some have like a living nurse or someone who visits that could help them out. Um, so we don't have a long list of, but it isn't.
The reason I actually said requests for exemptions must be made in writing and approved by the board's records. Have we even had seen them?
No, not, these, these might have been, um, um, we have, no, you're correct. We have not had, been, since I've been in the last, you know, three years. Uh, those might have been grandbought in before.
We've got the list of these here. But that, that's not for rollout, that's for exemptions. I think it's for exemptions. We've never had any, we've never had a disabled person ask us when exemptions go to bags or, or instead of a can.
No.
Right? Or, or, or even rolling out the can. But we have one case that knows that somebody's been rolling out and actually C N R provided that service.
Right, we had that one issue we talked about, right.
It's just that I have never seen, it's never come to the board for approval. It, it probably should just be handled with the staff.
Okay.
But it's less than, there's a board agreement, you know, you don't, but some people should.
But even if someone was just great in the father's class.
That's true. You better be careful, boss.
Just, just for.
He's warming up. He's warming up.
And just for clarification, I, I, um, first of all, I heard, uh, um, commenting on attachment B, uh, item E, and that was actually a minute for a different item that was, that separately. Um, so that's a distinction. But, yeah, you, you're correct, we haven't been, we haven't been in that, that process.
I guess a lot of Lawrence are being, do, do residents ever, I mean, I don't know how many residents are actually recommended the fact that they can contact us to have you guys roll their cart out. Do your drivers ever get some resident, like waving them down to come get the cart? Has anybody ever said that to you then? You know, like, there might be someone who's gonna cast or something. Do they, do they ever wave the driver down and say, hey, can you come get my cart?
Not that I'm aware of.
Didn't mean to stump you guys.
Not, not, not that I'm aware of, but, I mean, you know, typically people that are in that capacity would roll it out the night before or something like that, or have made arrangements. Cause I mean, but our drivers, you know, if asked, I'm sure.
I'm sure they will.
Yeah, I mean, as you, as I think you may have seen, there was a, someone just sent in an email today complimenting the driver on his excellent service, so.
Yeah, you know, my wife did the same thing, a couple months ago. The person helped her with the trash cart. She was, she was really great. You know, see, what he did, he got out and changed it cause it was broken, he put a new bar in. You know, it was pretty neat. Appreciate you helping, Greg. Of course, don't you?
I had a.
I'm glad you caught that, Jim. I would have never thought of that.
But I mean, this, this happened to me as part of the. Trash cards in the alley.
Right, right, but the minutes with the tax, it was part of the, it was part of the, right, yeah. Sorry about that, I should have exited out or something.
I could, I could never make my kids get a trash cart without my wife. Okay, so if we beat this one up another time. All right, uh, fog program.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is a request by the board to receive an update on the district's fastest oil and grease program. As you know, our consulting, uh, environmental organization Contracting Incorporated, uh, they are responsible for enforcement program. So I've asked Jill Jenkins to come today to give you a presentation, which she is here and.
Great time. Thanks, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'll, I'll stand up. Um, so like Scott said, um, just gonna give a general overview of the fog program services that E C conducts on behalf of the district. At the end, we have some, some general recommendations, but they're more actionized for us moving forward. Um, so you can get into it. So these are, uh, the basic fog program activities that we conduct, you know, in general. The top one, the bold one is, is probably the, the, the primary activity that we do is conducting what we call risk-based F S C fog inspection. Call them risk-based is because we, we focus our attention on the F S Cs that we feel have the highest potential to discharge fog into the sewer system to maximize the resources of the district and then not put so much attention on those that are doing a good job, not causing problems. Um, as part of each inspection, there's a, definitely an, an education element to it. We wanna make sure that F S Cs are, understand the rules and regulations of the program. Um, and then as needed for those to deal with extra help, there's enforcement, of course. Um, also F S C data management, all the inspection records are managed in a central, centralized access database. And we also use that database to generate their wastewater discharge permits and then issue those out to the, to the facilities. Um, another activity is plan review and customer service support. So anytime they have new F S Cs that are opening up within the district or remodeled, we assist in the plan review to make sure they're installing proper grease control devices. Um, and then at the end, uh, is fog source characterization and a system of hotspot reduction. So attending the sewer subcommittee meetings, um, and reviewing the, the hotspots and the, looking at the potential sources that are contributing to those hotspots to refocus resources that needed.
Question.
Yeah.
How do you get notified when the residents just come in and approve to us?
Great question. Thank you for asking that. And actually, the, that's, uh, what my next slide is gonna cover here. Uh, so F S C inventory management is a big part of that. Um, one, one way we do is we review the county healthcare agency review records. They go out and they inspect all the F S Cs annually. So you can see when there's a new one on that list that we don't have in our database. Um, we work with the city of Costa Mesa to get their, all their business license information and they compare that against our records. Um, and then of course, when we do plan review, we see a new one coming for plans. You know, very rarely does a brand new F S C come in that doesn't come across Candy's desk over there. So when we review those plans, we make sure we update them in our database. And then one that's done here is just driving around doing inspections. You know, our, our inspector sees a place, hey, I, I don't, I didn't know that place was there and opened up. Then they tell us about it and we look into it. But, you know, we, luckily we don't run into that too often, which is good. But since, uh, January of two thousand fourteen, we've identified a total of forty-one new F S Cs. Um, eleven of those are what we call limited food preparation, means they're not cooking, they don't cooking equipment, they're not cooking hot food. And then, um, the remaining thirty were immediately prioritized for inspection and, um, we've conducted inspections of the majority of those thirty. There's a few that are low risk that we'll, we'll make sure we get to within at least two years of them opening. Um, when we go out and we do the inspections of the new F S Cs, uh, that we identified, we do what's called initial inspection of them, uh, to identify and prioritize them for ongoing inspections. So it's just looking at what risks they have to contribute to fog discharging in the sewer system or create S S Os. Uh, so one is the presence what we call high-risk cooking equipment. That's grills, griddles, deep fryers, rotisseries, uh, that sort of thing. Um, are they in a upstream of a hotspot location, a fog hotspot location, um, is another one. Whether or not they have a grease interceptor installed. And then during that inspection, we educate them on the best management practices requirements to them. Make sure they have their logbooks, make sure they have training videos, you know, make sure they're aware of the program and what's gonna be required of them. From that inspection, then we can prioritize them for ongoing inspections. And so this is just a breakdown of the, the different F S Cs and how often we inspect them. So there's a total of five hundred and six, uh, F S Cs. Fifty-one are quarterly, seventy-four are semi-annual, annual is a hundred and thirty-six, and biannual is two hundred and forty-five.
And that's ranked based on the, what's your experience and, 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 um, the potential for problem, I would assume.
Right, right. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you list them all together, in other words, restaurants and fast foods and, you know, they're all the same?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right. We, we don't break them down based on the, the type of facility they are necessarily.
Yeah.
Um, mainly on what type of equipment.
So five hundred and six, they're all on Harbor Boulevard, right?
That's what you already have in the mar, yeah. But, and that's, and that's actually the map you see is Harbor Boulevard, right there south of the Coral Bay. So you can get a sense, different colors represent the different inspection frequencies. So a quarterly inspection is a facility that has a grease interceptor and is also in a hotspot location. So those kind of two things would step them up to quarterly. Or, um, an annual might be an F S C that doesn't have a grease interceptor but's in a hotspot. So we wanna make sure that we're there frequently with them, make sure they're staying up on their P and Ps. You see a lot of turnover within the district, new management coming in, new employees. So it's important to get out there, make sure that they're aware of the program and what's expected of them.
And, and not to be too facetious, but there's been such an influx of new places, especially on Harbor Boulevard. And now there's, you know, Burger King is gone, that's gonna become a chicken place which will feed fried chickens.
Right, and it's also an opportunity to, um, Burger King doesn't have a grease interceptor. So when the new place comes in, it's an opportunity to make sure they get something to put in there to protect that area and what they're discharging.
You should have got plans to put that down.
Yeah, so if they're planning on building something new there, then we'll get the plans and we'll make sure they build something.
Oh, King's Chicken.
King's Chicken.
Right, King's. King's, yeah. There, it's a big chain in Las Vegas.
Oh, okay.
I have a question.
How do I, how, why do you, how, how would I know that?
Yeah, we used to have a problem off of Bristol Street.
Yeah.
And then we had probably South Coast Plaza.
Right.
How we're working there.
So, um, South Coast Plaza, to start with them, is improving, uh, really well. They, they have, um, really good management and they're now, and they're doing a good job maintaining their grease interceptors and seeing a lot of the hotspots that are around South Coast Plaza and stepping back as far as the clean frequency.
Did they ever change the size of the street?
No.
Too large?
Yeah, but, no, they still have the large interceptors in there, but what they have done is stepped up on the, the chemical treatment in there and, and so reducing the hydrogen sulfide generation. I don't believe the district now is treating that list of issues in there because of what they were before.
That's a very successful statement he just made.
Yeah, that's a, yeah. So it's a big.
That was, that was Jim Colt from E E C was working with Scott and through the restaurant at South Coast Plaza. Hands-on, every step of the way.
And what about that one off of Bristol Street where, you know, we had a problem?
Mm-hmm.
Joe's, Joe was involved in that one, you can go ahead and explain that.
Right, and so, um, Bristol Street is still, uh, an issue, is still a hotspot, it's still, it's under the quarterly hotspot. Um, you know, it's a, where the camp and the lab is right there.
Yeah.
It's, it's a ba- backseat, growing, backseat developing type of place, and so.
Well, are you, okay, I'm sorry, I thought maybe, you were talking about that one?
That's what I was referring to, grandpa.
Okay, there was another one up on, it was on Pollerino, but it's served off of Bristol and that was another problem, but Joe was handling that one.
And I'll actually talk about that one in more detail, uh, later in my presentation.
Okay.
But, um, the one, the camp and the lab, the, the line there was replaced, which has, has helped that, that in there. But, you know, as you see, pissed down from that now, is, is, you know, growing there too. So, um, that's one where we've, we've been putting a lot of pressure on them and, and having a strong crisis in there from an inspection frequency standpoint, making sure they're all staying in compliance as far as fog discharge.
That's the one you picked in the bag, John?
Mm-hmm. The, the problem is that even though you have best available technology from a grease interceptor standpoint, they're not a hundred percent effective. And when you have a, a dense concentration of food service establishments in one area, you're gonna have some grease discharge in there, so.
One last question.
Yeah.
Newport rib companies, where they had a problem.
Mm-hmm.
Has that been solved?
Yeah. Newport rib companies stays in consistent compliance. They had a small, kind of undersized, five hundred gallon trap in a, a rib place. It was like five hundred.
I see the pumpers truck over there.
Yeah, they, they service that, I think, every, you know, every two weeks or monthly.
Hmm. Bring porn down, bring porn down.
They, all right, they have a, um, they drip straight grease from the ribs straight into the floor here and it goes into the grease interceptor.
Oh, we're smoking, yeah.
Yeah. So we, we've talked to them about, about changing that, fixing that, and they'd rather pump their grease interceptor.
Okay, it's hard to go there now.
I mean, I'm.
I know, but now that I know.
I'm sure the ringer.
Let me play, play work in a Kentucky Fried Chicken for a summer. That'll cure your fried chicken from all time.
The interceptor actually smells awesome compared to others, you know, it makes you hungry when you go there. Um, but what.
You were making fun of me, Dean. This is a joke.
Now you're in on it.
There's other restaurants that don't make you hungry, but, um, so once they're issued their general inspection frequency, they don't keep those for the life of the facility. We're constantly evaluating their inspection frequency to see, you know, is, is it, should we keep doing them quarterly even though they're always in compliance? Or should we increase their inspection frequency if they're never compliant? And so, um, certainly compliance history is one of the biggest factors that we look at in doing that. Also, um, we're, we're getting, we're constantly doing C C T B of the hotspots through the sewer subcommittee meetings of using those observations and also the observations made by the cleaning crews. And, and they're, they're doing light, medium, heavy type observations when they're clean and then giving us those reports so we can know whether there's issues or not. Um, we, we, if the health grading see clients not compliances at maybe a biannual F S C, we'll step them up to annual to, to work with them to get them back in compliance. Um, and then just our field observations when we're doing inspections. So illicit activities, if they have private S S Os or restricted F ones, you know, elevated water levels and grease interceptors, we wanna make sure we're feeding them a little bit more frequently to keep them compliant.
A, a use of tenders meeting, when they, they had the, um, the restaurant right by the, by Scott. For the hotel.
Yeah.
The one that had a drop manhole.
Right.
Is, is this getting anything going?
Yes, um, they fixed that drop manhole in there so the water flows better through there and they've, um, completely, I think they either replace that grease interceptor for that hotel or completely repurposed the inside of it.
Yes.
And so, mm-hmm, and so actually, I believe that hotspot is, is much improved in that location. So, uh, just a couple of examples, um, of some inspection frequency modifications. Uh, names have been removed to protect the instance. Um, but we had a, a major, we'll call them a major chicken chain that was originally an annual inspection frequency. They have a grease interceptor, but they're not in a hotspot location. Um, but every time we went and inspected them, they had consistent non-compliance fog and interceptor greater than fifty percent, which the requirement is twenty-five percent or less, so more or less double. Um, so what we did, we initially worked with them to try and get them to increase their, their pumping frequency, their interceptor to improve kitchen best management practices. So then knowing that they're not gonna see us for another year, basically they would wait for us to come inspect them to pump their interceptor if they're doing anything. And so what we had to do is increase their inspection frequency quarterly, um, and, and work with them more consistently, make sure they're pumping more frequently. Now we're seeing consistent compliance in this location. And, uh, you know, we, we'll, we'll keep inspecting them and then see if eventually we can step them back out to quarterly inspection or an annual inspection.
Even though they're on quarterly, you, you don't schedule their inspections.
No.
It's gotta be.
It's random. All right, so.
Cause I, you bring up a good point, man. Hold on, these guys, it's about, about that time of the year when these guys come.
Yeah. So quarterly, we, we just try and do it at some point in time during that month that falls in. Um, and then the annuals is just at any point in time during the year, but we don't wanna put these too close together from the previous one. But if they see us enough out there, they kind of expect us, especially when we're there quarterly, they, they know we're coming. And so they, they stay on top of it. And what you'll start seeing is that you'll, you'll get there either consistently right before they're supposed to pump, so you can kind of see what level the interceptor is right before pumping or right after they pump. And then you can see that they're actually doing it and keeping it clean. So it helps.
So Dean, the grease pumped out, can we use that as part of our diversion?
It's a commercial.
That's not, no, not in trash, it's just going upstream, you know, again.
It is commercial, but you could.
I mean, could you use that in the organic?
Oh, definitely, absolutely.
That's what I'm saying.
Absolutely. Mike wants that stuff, actually.
And if, if we could use that total for our diversion, to get us over to seventy-five percent if we had a good crack. And if you could acquire it. I mean, I'm just throwing that out as a measure. Does it, all of it?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about it, our total.
Some companies have their own receiving facilities, but the majority goes to us.
If you, if you're liquid, there's a lot of water, a little grease. They just fill it up.
It could, it could canter it or something.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
One, one possibility is, is, um, more and more new facilities are putting in, uh, hydro-mechanical grease interceptors or alternative ones like the Travzilla or something like that. Um, not so much with the Travzillas, but with the hydro-mechanicals, they're just cleaning it themselves and they can't mix that with their yellow grease drums, so they have to figure out a different, something different to do with it. And so that, that could be an option for them, if they have a container they could put it in and keep it in their trash enclosure and they can take stuff and take it. But it's a possibility.
Which is true, I know.
You know, there's a lot of things they'll do for seventy-one dollars a ton.
Yeah, if they're, if they're, even if they're getting money for it, I'm sure they would love to do that. This is the, the potential.
Do they, do they have to pay or try and facilitate the district to dump it there?
Yeah, they have a tipping fee, um.
It's a cost.
Um, so another example, that we had a, a, what's called popular breakfast type facility, um, mainly doing breakfast, but they also did lunch in there. Uh, we originally had them on a quarterly inspection frequency, they were in a hotspot location and have a grease interceptor. And they initially did have, uh, consistent non-compliance, so the fog's greater than fifty percent. Back when the, the program first started, that was common. Um, but, um, because we were there quarterly, we saw consistent compliance with them and actually a decrease in the cleaning frequency of that hotspot location. Um, and then since have, have slowly stepped back the inspection frequency for them to semi-annual and will work towards annual. You don't wanna go from quarterly straight to annual, you know, you wanna kind of step it up. But even at semi-annual, people are still seeing consistent compliance from this facility and they're, they're staying on the ball and, and they're, you know, they're proud when you come in and they, hey, look, I have all my pumping matter fast. You've been doing it and, you know, it's good for them.
You're killing me with not giving the name.
That's why I'm just gonna.
I'm sitting here, it's gotta be either Oyo Loco or Kentucky Fried Chicken. My guess is Kentucky Fried Chicken. The reason you don't have not given us the name.
Um, no, uh, we weren't sure mainly just because the, um, presentation was gonna be published on your website. We just wanna call someone out and, um, yeah.
That, that picture, I'm sure makes everybody hungry, you know.
I apologize for the pictures.
That's a good one.
Don't look at it if you don't like it.
Oh, I thought that was the fryer.
Um, and this actually, this photo here is actually from that Pollerino in Trinity new location that Rob was talking about and I'll talk about it here in a second. Um, but, uh, in order to, getting into some of the hotspot reduction services we've, we've been helping with and, and certainly the, the numbers here aren't direct from E E Cs. We like to take all the, you know, all the, the accomplishments from that. A, a lot of it is, is repairing, uh, we have a rehabilitation project that this district does. Um, increased cleaning efficiencies have, have also, um, resulted in this, but then also, uh, lot of source control. So starting way back in two thousand eleven, right, not that long ago, there was ninety-seven total hotspots within the district and currently we have, uh, thirty-six on the list that we're working on. Some of those thirty-six are on what we call permanent hotspot location list. They're just cost prohibitive to do a, a repair there and so that's where they're gonna live. But, um, there's definitely, um, a good portion of that thirty-six that we're working on right now. A lot of it is, is fog and source control type stuff that, you know, we've done all the repairs in these locations that are feasible to do, and so now it's just making sure these sources stay compliant and stop discharging fog to the sewer system as much as possible. Um, and so that's, that's basically the approach is gonna be, um, you know, where we can do continued rehabilitation, um, work with the, the clean maintenance crew guys and, and their cleaning observations and how they're seeing these hotspots and accumulation in there. And then, uh, doing source control focused on a lot of the shopping centers. That's where we see a lot of the fog, the hotspots, the shopping centers with dense populations of F S Cs.
Is there a lot of odor when you come across something like that on the previous picture?
Um, in the, there can be, um, I, I, I guess I don't have to go back to it. In this one, you see the, the manhole lid here. Um, there's no open holes in this and underneath it, there's a gasket seal. So if the lid is on and tight, you shouldn't smell anything from the interceptor. This is a, um, a Jensen interceptor, it, and so you don't have the holes. But if you have a Pro Cast interceptor, they have the bolt holes. So the first thing that happens is the, the pumper comes in, removes the bolt holes and pumps the interceptor, but doesn't put the bolt back in. So then you have open bolt holes into the grease interceptor. So from those, sometimes you can get.
Yeah, we have a higher than so fine limit. And you're not responsible for that, but, and Orange County fans, it's because of higher than so fine.
Right.
So it's half apart from me and it's probably in the water, not in the air.
This picture right here was from one property.
Yeah. And so, just quickly with the hydrogen sulfide limit, um, it is enforced through O C S D and since all facilities do go to O C S D, you can enforce it from the district. And whenever we have issues, so like, uh, a good one, a good one is South Coast Plaza. On those facilities, when we do inspections there, we enforce the hydrogen sulfide limit to make sure that they're keeping up their chemical control. But we don't do it for every single facility, but if we do have odor complaints at some facilities, we can go in and enforce the hydrogen sulfide limit. But typically when we do that, the, really the only thing you can do to control it is chemical treatment. That's what we've seen it work best. It's usually a result of a interceptor that's oversized, unfortunately. So, yeah, this, uh, location here, uh, in the picture with Pollerino Trinity, uh, you see the massive fog. So, yeah, this, uh, location here, uh, in the picture with Paul Reno and Trinity, uh, you see the massive fog emissions. A lot of it was because they have a, their lateral connection right here is at twelve o'clock, and so it's just a direct dump in to the sewer. And so it just flashes up in here and creates a lot of fog blockages and whatnot. And, uh, they were out there cleaning this location, uh, quarterly. And because of the logistics of the sewer line in there, they'd have to chase it all the way up around the corner and it was, you know, uh, a few hundred feet, multiple hundred feet of clean every time they did it. Um, and so what we did, so talking about, first the next topic essentially is talking about, um, some fogs discharge mitigation activities, um, up and coming and recently. So Paul Reno and Trinity, we got with the, the property manager there, we sent them letters, talked about, showed them pictures of the, of the drops there. Um, the district looked at potentially repositioning that lateral so it doesn't come in at quite an angle. Um, but that wasn't necessarily possible, but, um, you know, just talking to him about the, all the restaurants in there, none of them had grease interceptors, uh, except for one that had a very small trap that helped them more. You know what I mean? Um, and, and, uh, and so what happened is a lot of the, the facilities in there started kind of going out of business. And when the property manager in there decided they wanted to have new facilities come in, they wanted to remodel FSCs, they then looked into putting in grease interceptors for those FSCs. And so what we're seeing is three brand new grease interceptors going in on one side, potentially two more on the other side. And they're also are putting in a, a brand new private lateral that's going out to Bristol Street instead of on Paul Reno.
That's the market, right?
Yeah. Um, and so we're, that, I believe.
Sorry, did you say, have you seen them install the interceptors or they just?
We, we've seen all the plans for it, they've gone through plan approval and, and I believe they're getting ready to start, I'm not sure of the status.
It's all in.
It's all in.
Yeah, well, one of the interceptors is in because that restaurant will be used, the other two are for future.
Right. So we'll get out there and look at them as soon as the restaurant's open and, so the interceptors are in. Um, and so we should start seeing improvements in this location. Already the, the, just through source control and through re-channeling of manholes and, and that sort of thing, we've, we've been able to step this hotspoting quarterly up to semi-annual. And now hopefully we can, you can move it all off the list or to annual or, um, you know, it's a, it's a, a great win there. Um, another one, um, was on Newport Boulevard, um, the, the south side of Newport Boulevard, right before you get to Triangle Square, right there. Um, big, long hotspot, um, in Triangle Square, they have a private pump station and what this, the cleaning guys were seeing was a lot of heavy grit, black grit in the sewer there that they were pulling out of it. And so this pump station for the Triangle Square was suspected to be a source, but, um, we weren't really ever sure. And so just last year, um, I went and met with the property manager at Triangle Square and watched them pump out and clean out the, uh, the, the pump station. And you see, it's maybe hard to see in the picture, but you can see it here, it just had a, a really thick, heavy layer of grease on the top. They weren't cleaning, they were cleaning annually. And basically, all, all of the restaurants and everything from Triangle Square goes into this sort of listing and is lifted out onto Newport Boulevard. Um, and then when they got to the bottom, there was a nice big, big layer of black grit in the bottom as well. And so since then, the, the, the property management has moved the cleaning frequency to this lift station quarterly. And they've been maintaining that quarterly frequency. So now the thing to see is the next time the guys go out and clean it, is there improvement here, so we now step back to clean frequency in this location. And we just need to stay with the, the Triangle Square to make sure they keep maintaining this lift station. So, you know, for EEC standpoint, it's all, it's all relative and all related, it's not just inspecting grease interceptors occasionally to make sure people are maintaining their other assets, their other elements, so that they're, they're flowing, this is causing problems. Um, and so one that we just started working with is the last one, the Bristol Street in Red Hill, um, down there, if you can think about where that is. Um, there's multiple FSCs in the strip mall there that don't have grease control devices and it's been a long time hotspot. One in there has a very small trap. And we had to, a lot, we did a lot of work with them to make sure they were maintaining that trap frequently, they now cleaned it out weekly. And so what we're doing is, is contacting and working with the property management, this location, to talk about, um, potentially doing something like they did Paul Reno and Trinity, putting in grease interceptors or at least, uh, grease traps until they do a remodel or something like that, where they can put something bigger. But encouraging them to install devices. Um, I'm sorry, I'm going along, I'll, I'll, before, but, um, just to, you just look at some key program trends that we like to look at each year is just, you know, SSOs in general. It's like, kind of evaluate how effective a program is, is are, are you seeing spills, are you, are you having increases in hotspots? And, um, no, you know, since, uh, two thousand and thirteen, we haven't had a fog-related sewer overflow in the district. And that's not solely attributed to the control or to the inspections we do. A lot of that is proactive line cleaning to the guys, identifying areas that could cause a problem, putting them on the, the hotspot list, cleaning them and then, and then mitigating those sources. But identifying before they cause a problem.
We, we need, uh, quarterly, uh, uh, hotspots, I mean, with, uh, Joe and Rob and, and the clean crew, and we go over all the hotspots and the clean crew will identify, yeah, just clean this line and just what came back. And then we give a go, we dig up, we go up and look who's causing it. So, so we're, I, I feel we're, we're on top of it, on, on the, you know, and, and on, one of my goal, I think, is to get it to less than twenty, twenty, so that's what we're trying to achieve, is less than twenty. I think less than twenty, less than thirty, I think less than thirty hot, hotspots, locations, we're at thirty-six right now, so.
I wonder if you have a turn like this, where it's coming, it's the right way.
Yeah.
That the proactive, and you're meeting, I think, is important to continue to, that's, I mean, that's great.
We're talking to each other, we're, we're, we were talking to each other last, sorry. It's, it's doing more than meeting the bare minimum requirements of the WDR, what it is, it's, it's caring about having a effective program. And so we, we see all over the state, people doing the bare minimum and wondering why they're on the verge of consent rates. And so, you know, you guys have, since the implementation of WDR, even the two thousand and two version of it, have been doing the right thing. And then, you know, it takes time, it's eventually, you know, you immediately, you're not gonna see awesome results, but working with the facilities, getting people up to date, um, putting in the right devices, then you start seeing the benefits of that, and so.
Right, but are there any other local cities that do the same thing that we're doing?
Um, not, not necessarily from a hotspot mitigation proactive approach like that. A lot of people are willing to put, put their locations on, uh, at like an enhanced cleaning frequency. You know, if they have a single bill, they're like, ah, I have to lift, and then they have hundreds upon hundreds of locations. And their guys, they're using up all their resources and their guys up there just constantly cleaning.
On, on your current, like the inspection practice?
Yeah, um.
That you're doing.
Right, for the programs that we manage, yes. So Irvine Ranch Water District, uh, City of Santa Ana, um, the Mahabra, um, you know, they're doing similar, we call it risk-based inspections. Um, oh, we can think of a, I can, could name a few where they're doing, they just said, inspect all the facilities annually. And then they get, at the end of the year, they get a report and they, they look at it and they say, okay, maybe these, these guys were bad, so we should maybe send the guys up to clean there or something, you know? And then, you know, the next year, do it again, and so.
That's a reaction, right?
Yeah, it's reactive, it's not proactive, exactly.
One, one thing I want to mention off on, on the graph, um, on a total public episode, I'm sorry, I didn't catch this, but on fourteen fifteen, there's three episodes, we actually have two episodes in fourteen fifteen. So, um, so part of trends going, going down.
Like a good slide to give a lot of research for, I'm sure, this could be a, a program that's up for someone, which is what people are wanting.
When I came on the board, in, in oh six and oh seven, I, I probably had more like fifteen, sixteen public episodes.
Um.
You might want to check that.
Yeah, this is Seewitt's data, so, um, I'm not, uh.
Well, I think it's just checked to Seewitt, it's, it's not relevant.
Yeah, it could be, um, have been updated since then. This, this basically what we've done is reported this graph, probably since two thousand and eleven, here add on to latest year, so.
I think that, that.
Could be a steeper, yeah.
Well, that, that six is what, is probably wrong.
Okay.
I think it's probably fifteen or seventeen.
Off the chart, yeah.
And then, and then that's why we, you know, we were, EEC was involved in the process then, that's why we started looking at hotspots and, and all the different deals, bringing down the numbers.
Right.
Check, check the line.
I, I can, I can check on it and update it, and can you guys update a graph in case you wanna?
If, if, that's the Seewitt data, is the same, right?
Okay. Um, so just, um, we, we're calling them recommendations, but they're really our ongoing action items is, you know, continue doing risk-based inspections, like we just talked about. There, we feel is the best way, most efficient way to manage a program. Um, continue with hotspot reductions, especially source, uh, identification and source, uh, investigation, working with the property managers to, to get with their facilities to make sure they're not constructing too much grease in the sewer system. And then continue, uh, FSC enforcement, um, focusing on people with chronic, uh, noncompliance, please. Um, you know, we do have facilities that were going from annual to quarterly, maybe we have to do more enhanced enforcement on the facilities. And so it's, it's not something that we've done in the past, usually just handle this through working with them and, and, um, and trying to educate them as much as we can. But, you know, for the handful that don't, don't understand it or, or aren't, aren't, don't care, you know, sometimes you gotta elevate it. We have had to do letters and usually letters do the trick, and so.
You mentioned that, that's a guy over on Seventeen Street, fifty-three Restaurant?
Mm-hmm.
I know that one.
Yeah.
From Roddick in here and, we haven't seen any, it must be a.
Meat hole.
Could say, because I can.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the new restaurant.
No longer there.
That was in my chicken place.
Is that what it was? No wonder we have many problems, that's a great way to solve issues.
I don't know, breasty is fried waffle.
I'm just speaking for the district, but I think still we wanna, uh, keep a business friendly approach as much as possible, and, you know.
You know, one of the recommendations I was making, you, you don't have to wait till you change Scott's soul on a number of hotspots in order to be a girl.
Right.
Robert, I have a question, out of the thirty-six hotspots, are any of them part of our grade four?
Uh, that's a very good question. I would say that it's possible. We haven't done that correlation yet, so, they, they could be, and that's a very good question. We couldn't, well, we did, we could match them up. When we get back to, we get.
We have photographic numbers that I'm.
I know. Well.
Well, the G I S, the state, the, the, the main thing for, that is all the data, which is probably a, a request to make a match.
Yeah, we could match it up, certainly.
That is, that is true, that's what we're approaching that.
Well, I'll let, uh, Joe check that, 'cause they have the grade four. But I think the real takeaway here is that we care. And as Joe will tell you, there are other agencies that have a lot of inspection and a fog program and all this and that. I don't, I don't know of any other agency that has a committee like we do, where we get, we get the general manager, the engineers, the field guys, our consultant, all in the same room and analyze them down to what can we do to solve that and is it cost effective? So, uh, that, that's had spectacular results as we've seen.
Kind of dark, you made, made a good point about, this is, this is a really good presentation that should be given at a CSBA conference or any kind of, I, I, this really is, we really are upfront. And it'd be worthy of, of some kind of.
It's just another example of the, the programs we've created to take care of the problems rather than just mi- mitigate or react to the problem.
It's been very clever. That's just a sign of our good leadership ability to, to, to fight with some people. Any other questions for Joe or staff?
Yeah, it's good job.
Thank you.
Great job, always, thank you so much.
No sense.
Sit down, you're, you're in for the duration. Thanks again, though. Scott, legislative analysis?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Mr. President, how very typical of you to report. Thank you, members of the board. Um, this is an analysis provided to the board on a quarterly, uh, basis, updating, um, the board of, um, the current, uh, bills that, uh, the, the state, um, is, is proposing. Uh, we do have two that we are supporting, Assembly Bill one ninety-nine and Assembly Bill, uh, eight eight eight. We are opposing Assembly Bill forty-five and six seventy-six. And we are currently watching our four bills, which is Assembly Bill ten seventeen, ten sixty-three, fourteen, forty-seven, and Senate Bill, uh, two forty-two. Any of the board members have any question, or if you may have a question?
Our SDRMA board meeting, I'm just a legislative officer. I think we're, I think SDRMA and, and our lawyers, our legislative lawyers, have pretty much mirrored what CSBA obviously has done, so. A lot of surprise you have in here, there's a whole slew of bills right now, um, before the assembly, I think, is committed on drone, use of drones. I mean, it's, it's huge up there, where you are, everybody wants legislation on drones. And, uh, I think it's, CSBA, I think, and, and SDR, we're kind of in a watch position, we're not really doing anything about it, so. Uh, it's gonna be perfect for Ed, and I have a drone, and just in the corner, fly over. Any, any questions?
Yeah, I just, I just do want to mention that, uh, remember called, um, eighty forty-five, uh, that looks to the bill that we were lobbying in Sacramento, and that is on suspense, that's been put in suspense file right now, but it's dead for now.
That's the House of, House of Lords, yeah.
How do you, do you touch the bond of CSB? Or what we oppose, or what we watch, or all these things, or how do you get?
There's several websites that, that we look at, and, uh, CSB is one of them, we look at their website, see what, what, that they have posted. Um, I can't think of the other website, but there's lots of others that, that, that we look at, I think, uh, League of Cities is another one, um. I can actually tell, that's, we won't primarily, uh, depend on CSBA, they give us, uh, updates, uh, um, basically updates all the time. Uh, if they request us to oppose or support a bill or we agree it, then we'll have the president sign it and then we give them a copy of that, of that letter. So, um, we don't give them a copy of the report to the board, we just send them, uh, uh, support office letters to, to, they're requesting amendments to, to, uh.
Okay, so I'm under legislation, can you, I just want to make sure we're not spitting our window, you know?
Yeah, so we're, we, we try to, we try to be in the same, same page with, uh, with the ASMR, support opposition in Washington, so. Good, thank you. Um, I'm sick. Thank you, Mr. President, I can, how, how, how very typical of you to report.
Thank you, members of the board. Uh, this report, um, i- is for consideration of expanding the current door-to-door HSW collections program to, to all residents. Uh, as you know, we currently have a free door-to-door program, um, uh, to those who are unable to, uh, take the items to the permanent, to the floor of permanent facilities in, in Orange County. Um, and, uh, pretty much allows senior citizens, immobile and disabled individuals to dispose of their HSW, HSW materials without leaving their home. Um, all other residents are encouraged to use the county's, uh, permanent facilities. And staff is providing options to the board, uh, consider expanding this program to all residents. As you all know, products that contain corrosive, toxic, um, chemicals are considered HSW, so we don't want them to be in our trash. We don't want them to be dumped in, in our sewers, so we promote, um, um, this program, so they take it to, to their workplace and, and take those items out of, out of that, those two, two waste streams. Uh, as indicated earlier, Orange County residents can dispose of HSW for free at the county's floor locations. Um, however, the following cities do offer door-to-door HSW collections to all of their residents. And those states are Aliso Viejo, Dana Point, San Clemente, and Tustin, and the holler is, uh, CRNR. And they charge thirty-one cents, helpful, so if the district wanted to implement this program, um, to, uh, all of our residents, it will cost about approximately eighty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, uh, to do so. However, staff does not recommend this option at this time. We reviewed some of the, uh, reports from the OC Waste and Recycling HSW, uh, usage reports in Costa Mesa for fiscal years eleven, twelve, twelve thirteen, and thirteen fourteen, and approximately twenty-five hundred vehicles, um, and households, uh, use, um, from Costa Mesa participate annually. Uh, so to put that into a perspective, uh, if, if, uh, if all the, the residents, um, stop going there and start participating in our current program. um, stop going there and start participating in our current program, it's gonna cost about a, you know, um, you know, quarter million, million dollars. Um, we currently have a one-day, um, H S W event that we hold every other year, and we generate about three hundred and eight vehicles, uh, which, um, generates about approximately twenty-eight thousand pounds of H S W. Uh, we, we should escalate from the county's end, because it's a really great event. Um, and it's only twenty thousand dollars, 'cause we split the, the cost with the county folks. Forty thousand dollars, we pay twenty, they, they pay, uh, twenty. Um, and so we also looked at the cost per resident that is associated with each of the programs, and our current door-to-door H S W program is about, uh, a dollar five cents, uh, per resident, but, but only seniors, seniors, uh, to, 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 in the, you know, disabled, um, constituents. The permanent H S W is, is free, so we encourage those twenty-five hundred residents to continue to go there, um, 'cause it's, it's free, why would we wanna pay for that? The one-day, uh, H S W event, uh, comes off about ninety-three cents, uh, per household, and again, it's every other year, so you can split that and divide that by two to get your, to get your annual. Uh, C R N R services, if we, uh, charge, uh, our residents, uh, you know, thirty-one cents per month, it's about three dollars and seventy cents. So it's the most expensive option, and it'll double our current cost, um, and they'll, they'll, will be limited to two pickups per year, uh, up to a hundred and fifty gallons of pickup. So, um, it, it, I, I also added the, um, uh, fact that staff, we recommend maintaining the status quo. Bless you. Thank you, bless you.
One more.
And, uh, continue to maintain the status quo and offer the one-day, uh, H S W, uh, collection, um, uh, to, to, to the, the public. Um, there are some other options that, that, that are, are available. We, we could definitely enter in the gurno and C R N R and pay the thirty-one cents per household, um, which is gonna require an additional fund of about forty-six thousand dollars. Uh, or we can also amend the current contract, uh, and cap the program at a certain dollar amount, similar to the SLAP program, and use it as a special for, uh, these, uh, spaces. Um, however, if we do it that way, uh, C R N R cannot guarantee that, uh, they will be able to track the usage per household, uh, so one household may be, use it multiple times. Um, and they do implement that, the district implement administrative policies and procedures to oversee the program to ensure that it stays within, uh, budget, so we can either get monthly reports to see where we're at, um, weekly or quarterly to, to, to kind of get a sense of, of, of usage. Uh, so in a nutshell, that's, that's, that's my, uh, report, available. Any, any questions?
I was gonna prop this up for discussion. When I mentioned the budget, see, what do we budget every year for, for seniors, 'cause we have a large amount left over.
Forty thousand dollars, forty thousand?
Well, but it's not, it's a couple cents from the forty thousand dollars, it's not just that, right?
Right.
So, he's gonna tell you, can you tell him what else is budgeted for the forty thousand dollars?
Um, well, they, they, for the seniors, for the seniors?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, you know, what's in our budget, 'cause we don't use very much of it.
We, we, no, we don't, we only spend about five thousand dollars.
That's what I thought.
I believe.
No, no.
No, that's, 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 that's.
It's a separate budget.
That's a budget. Are, are you referring to the, uh, to the, uh, H S W pickups that we do in the, uh?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
In that, in, um, pharmacies?
No, this is for the seniors.
Yeah, there's, there's forty thousand dollars budgeted in the H H W line item. What else do you pay for out of that besides senior pickups, is that it?
Don't, don't we do the alternative, um, the one-day event?
Yeah.
For the forty thousand?
Yeah.
Well, you said the one-day event was twenty thousand.
Yes, twenty thousand.
So it's not just that?
It is that also, it's twenty thousand.
I believe it is, yes.
And we do, we do that every other year, so we don't budget twenty thousand a year every other year.
And they split the one-day event with the county?
Correct.
So we don't absorb the whole cost for their budget, they request a budget, like, they're budgeting it every year. So now we don't spend, your question is, we don't spend the entire thing. Last year, we had twenty-five thousand dollars left over, because it was the year that they had the, um, event with the county, and so between that and the household, um, door-to-door, we still had twenty-five thousand left over.
Sure, we have thirty.
Well, we cut down the budget by ten thousand, 'cause they weren't spending it, and then, um, they were talking about doing some other things, so.
I have an idea that I'll talk to you later, but I'm, I'm not finished. Oh, I'm sorry.
I can cut their budget more, is that why you were going? I can do that.
Before, we had a household hazardous pickup at the home, in the different company we grew up.
Yes.
And that was, that was pretty successful, I thought.
Very successful.
And I don't, do you remember what the cost of that was?
It was, it was, uh, I think a hundred dollars, uh, per household.
Which we pay right now for the, um, household pickup, we pay a service charge to pick up, and then we pay based on what you pick up, the tonnage or quantity?
Maybe.
It's a black fee.
Black fee and no quantity, okay.
And they drop off the bag and sell them up and put them in a certain time, that's a public fair market.
And you don't bill us by the qu- the weight?
No.
Black fee.
So I, I thought that was, like, not just, we wanna consider a board that has help for us, so.
My question is, do we get a lot of calls, do we deny, because we tell them that the program is?
Not at all, actually, one of the reasons we, we, we don't do that, 'cause we wanted to see, well, um, first of all, we wanted to see, are, are people gonna use it, and if that becomes a problem, then we can get more stringent on the requirements, asking for proof or just asking the questions, but pretty much they call and we ask them, um, you know, are, do you meet this criteria? They say, yeah, we go ahead and forward it to C R N R, so.
We don't, we don't have to deny many calls.
Absolutely, no, we have not, not any calls.
But they, in our website, it's just a senior citizen's zone, but if we open it up to other citizens, you're wondering how many people participate.
They're definitely not taking advantage of this program.
Yeah, it's just, look at the, look at the senior citizens, but other people, sort of, may.
They, they may.
If we open it up, it's just a cost factor.
I, I had, two times, I had a buddy.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I just think, 'cause I was.
I know, you were on a roll. Yeah, I, I kind of, I had, kind of had two thoughts, Javier, and, and the first one, you mentioned the SLAP program. Um, maybe we could look into some kind of program where if, if, if it's a hundred bucks for the pickup, right?
Correct.
Roughly. So what do we say to the, if we say to the residents, hey, uh, we've got this program where we'll pick up your hazardous waste, I can't say that all the words together, the hazardous waste, um, for fifty bucks, we'll, we'll kick in the other half, and do it a program similar to SLAP, where we have the participants participating. For fifty bucks, if I've got a bunch of paint cans in my garage, I'll pay fifty bucks to have someone take that out of it, and maybe I'm an exception, but I think that's a thought. But the other thought I had was, two weeks ago, in my neighborhood, real estate agent, I think it was Valerie Terrell, had a huge garage sale. So what if we approached in a partnership type thing, the real estate people in the chamber or somebody and said, hey, this, we have an event that we can do for twenty thousand dollars. We got five real estate agents to kick in four thousand dollars each, let them advertise as part of the program, you know, the Valerie Terrelli, Larry Wyklin, have hazardous waste pickup. It's gonna be, you know, we could do it more than every other year, we could do it once a year, or whatever. I think these real estate agents would jump all over it.
This is probably will be, you have to be certified to pick up, to handle this, I think. It'd have to, it could be done, but it'd have to be done in the right manner.
Well, I mean, does, does that twenty thousand dollars include the people to pick it up?
Yeah.
So we get, we get somebody else to pay for it, and we sponsor it, make it a community. They do how, they do the electronic recycling, Chamber does that, and other, so maybe, you know, Wyklin is always doing a shredding program? So maybe it's something we could take a look at.
We want to look at this, kick in the money, but just, just as hazard waste, you just can't have anyone handle these materials.
We would, no, we would still do it like we do with the county, but, you know, the real estate folks or any other business that wants to contribute.
Take money, and then we advertise it, while people are coming to the event, advertise their names.
We, we signs it, thank you to our sponsors, you know, Valerie Terrelli, Relity, whoever.
State Farm?
State Farm, I mean, my company would participate.
They would, they would have to have the bag, not whatever, they would have the bag to the house to bring it to the, uh, location.
Yeah.
Right, Dan?
Has that ever been done anywhere else?
Not that I know of.
Is it viable?
Would you recommend that or not?
I don't know, I, I don't know how close you are with your realtor, I don't know, I don't know. Well, they do these garage sale things, and, and I know the residents, we, we actually used to have a, I don't remember the agent, but you used to sponsor a, a cleanup day, where she would buy like five roll-offs, and you could throw your stuff in there. I mean, and people, those things filled up in three or four hours. So, this could just be another community project, but I mean, two things, you know, if, if, if a resident wants to do it, maybe we kick in half or.
I, I could tell, um, I, for fifty bucks, I don't think people would, I mean, I take my house, I gotta, I, I live in Orange, I go, I go to Annapolis, I just drive and take it.
And I go.
You gotta do it.
We go to Rainbow, I think.
So, um, yeah, we, we, we were working with, with the twenty beach, Rainbow, um, the one I had, it's on the Republic, on hand and run, um, I sold up my stock in the waste and councilway and killed it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know what the reaction would be, but I think an annual community event with the sanitary district would show real leadership on our part.
So, so your suggestion is that, see, the real estate agents will, will, will donate some money to have an annual drop-off site, and then we could post their, their, their name as a sponsor to advertise it, maybe all going flyers and stuff and, and, and at the event, so you're, you're saying not through the door-to-door household, have the way to do the, the drop-off class at, at the.
Oh, I.
Yeah, we'd have to make sure.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna touch the senior, but they'll keep it.
I just don't wanna open this up, I, I think it's gonna be very expensive if we open it up to the whole city.
Can I make a suggestion that, because we only host the, um, or Sharon hosting the Orange County event every other year? That we make this in every other year, that way we have the money budgeted to the senior consistent, and then we're spending the remaining portion on either an event every other year and, uh.
And we can get sponsors.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, we are, we are sponsored.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are the experts, C R N R can tell us what the kind, you know, I don't, I don't pay my house every year, so I don't have paint cans and junk in there, but, I, yeah, I don't care often, but I just think it's a, a chance for us to partner with folks in the community that would do it.
Just, uh, I think just, if we're gonna, if you wanna do it annually, our drop-off site, I think O C C might, what, what is, that's the only reason I went by it, annual facility, it wants to do it every year. A lot, it's a lot coordinated.
It's a lot of work, I know.
Yeah, that's why they want to do it every other year, instead of every year. For that, you know, if we wanna do it annually, we might have to find another location.
Can you do it originally?
Well, I just wanna make a comment, I, um, what we found in, in the communities that have signed up for the H H W program, and that's a lot easier, H H W, the whole word's out, the more you advertise, the more queues. So, and most of the beach communities, like, thanks to many Dana Point could have it, we do an annual brochure, as you do, and right after that annual brochure, boom, the phones light up, okay? We get a lot of people calling in. And, uh, we, the thirty-one cents is something we've used for several years in our cities, but with the thirty-one cents, we kinda take the risk, depending on, you know, there could be a thousand calls in a year, it could be a hundred, so we might win, we might lose, but, um, whatever you think is best for the community, we're gonna support, uh, because, you know, for eighty thousand dollars, it's, it's kind of a, uh, blue light special for us. Harvey?
I was rolling a little before you, but that's okay. Um, I was gonna say something more along the way you were talking about. The people in Costa Mesa, especially, want to know how to be hazardous waste, they really don't understand it. When I had put my fingers out, you know, for a pickup one time, they were really confused, and they wanted to know how many, you have to have so many cans, these, that, I think we need to send to your newsletter, that lets people be aware and know of everything that goes on, you know? And then that, like, there's, because there's so many people that have things to go, and they're just not aware of it, so they're afraid to do it. And they're saying, okay, if you do it, then we'll see what happens after, you know, that kind of thing. So it would be important to know if you can, that so many cans are, so much pounding, and the whole thing, a lot of, the whole thing.
Yeah, I think I agree, that really ties to what you said, once you publicize it, oh, let's do it.
Yeah, yeah. We spent, um, almost six thousand dollars this year in, uh, household types of waste money, and that was a non-O C year, so this next budget year should have, uh, twenty thousand dollars for the event, plus whatever we have in the senior.
But, yeah, I, I didn't mean to say I wanna get rid of.
Yeah, as far as sponsorship, so maybe focusing on paint stores and Home Depot and.
Oh, yeah.
People who sell all the hazardous waste stuff, that eventually goes into the stream, maybe they oughta step up their play.
Good call. So our, our organization's trying to give you a draft of letters, say, we'd like to have one in two thousand sixteen, we'd like the participated to sponsor, and see, see if they will, because before we have a program, you send it out to the river, there's nothing to.
Oh, and then, and then, and then you got.
Home Depot.
You have to go, how much?
Yeah, right. Just to see what the response is.
That makes sense.
You know, then, then it ties in to Wendy's suggestion, we have one at a different site, and have C R N R running, and we'll have the money to pay for it, because we're gonna have, not gonna have as much, we're gonna have fourteen thousand, an extra level of cost, whatever we need for it. What does a one-day event cost?
What do, what do?
Four thousand.
For a one-day event?
Four thousand is probably a pretty good number, I think, that's what we, we worked with Tustin on that, I think it's a good number.
We, we go with, we pay twenty, they pay twenty.
If we have, so, if we have fifteen left over, we'd have to generate twenty-five thousand for us to pay the board.
One of the biggest, one of the biggest issues we've had lately in two cities we have roundups is finding a place to do it. School districts, parking lots are a great place, school districts are shying away from that area because of liability. Uh, a lot of cities don't have public work yards, um, which some, sometimes work, a lot of it is a big issue.
Yeah, I, I could see it happening in our public work yard, it's over potential, it's easy in and out, and, and part of that partnership, should be.
From the city, from the city, yeah, you know, so.
Maybe the third one.
With after the board.
With the city probably, and third one would be a charge box if you were doing it.
Yeah, there's, um, through.
I think we should look into the, the city.
The corporation, yes?
Definitely, that'd be enhanced, I believe.
Another project, I guess, but I think it's a little worth it. If, and if it doesn't work out after the first year, then we don't do it.
I have a question on, on sponsorship, sponsorship, I think it's a really great idea, especially like the Home Depots and paint, uh, companies. Uh, my concern is with maybe real estate, and, I mean, what about developers, and we oversee some of the development plans, and we approve them for trash and things like that, so I hate to, I hate to.
Yeah, I hate developers, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah. The real estate agents like doing that, you know, public service, and they all have their own little farm areas that they wanna publicize, so, I mean, they'll put out, they'll put out the information, yeah, it wouldn't necessarily cost us a lot to advertise, but I think those agents, once we have a plan in place, then we can notify them.
I'll make this couple, you know, Wyklin wants to do shredding in ten days.
Sure.
Or, or, you know, whatever else.
I think we should look into it. We did it in December, Terrelli could put up a snow yel, and they could slide down to the painting.
So, Rob, you remember who the vendor was that was used to do it?
Uh, door-to-door? Oh, they changed names to.
Third side, yeah.
Third side, yeah.
Did her way to which if you luck into a pass record, so you spent, you know, a certain year.
Yeah, which year are you interested in, what do you wanna know?
I don't know, maybe, I'm not sure when it was.
Okay, why don't, we've been here ten years, so I'll just go year by year and tell you what we spent on that.
No, just talk about.
No, I can only go ten years, thank you, though.
From third side.
You're like, you know, I'm not.
Just for our knowledge.
Okay, yeah, I'll do a, a little chart, that shows year by year what we spent on it, and who the vendor was.
I think from Wendy's standpoint, she'd probably rather have something that's capped, so, she, she probably would like the yearly thing rather than a wide open door to door. Cause I believe that's one of the reasons that it was. Yeah, we, we just limited to seniors.
So, we're, we're gonna still have to tell you, right? Yeah, sure.
We're just gonna have something every year, some event besides the, every year.
Yeah, just, just, just another point of clarification, the county is not gonna pay for it there because they don't wanna pay for something every year.
But if we come up, but on the off year, we do it on a smaller scale.
The whole quarter, the whole quarter.
Um, I'm Seven, Director Oden, since I was representing your interest in Sacramento, I'd say, I apologize for making you.
So, we, we had a, on Thursday, June fourth, we always meet first, Thursday, each month, and for the next two months, I, I won't be at that meeting. But we did decide to have a meeting because we're just going on cards, first thing we talked about was exemptions and what, this is the starting to get some follows. There are also thirty so far from the town hall meeting and whatnot, uh, from residents. And in the program, when we set it up, when we anticipated about three dollars in exemptions, so, we saw, and we also have, um, some data, collected data on multi family, you know, exemptions where they don't have. Where they're not gonna get a, exemptions are, they're not gonna get an organic card, so, um, and based on staff and CR and R's investigation, there's nine hundred and forty six of them. So, about a third of the three thousand that we estimated potentially be exemptions, um, for the multi family and we're starting to get. Then we, then we talked about, uh, three things, uh, requesting additional organic cards, uh, removing the mixed rich cards and getting a smaller, uh, organic recycling card, a third to down, rather than a fifth to down.
Is that possible? Or the possible just?
Yes, it is, but what we're gonna do is encourage them to try the program for a couple weeks, with the parts, if given, and, and then our accommodations, uh, either to remove the mixed rich cards or, getting the smaller cards or getting additional, so, that program will probably pick up steam after we roll out all the cards. Um, the, the staff and CR and R has made a card hanger, uh, that will be passed out with the cards for the same program. CR and R and the district are, um, definitely for, uh, there's probably a large number of cards when the, the organic cards show up, a lot of people still don't, don't know about the program. There's one more town hall meeting scheduled for Thursday, June eighteenth, extending it to senior centers, that'll be the last town hall meeting. Uh, we discussed how if then we, we need to, uh, do a television news media, um, and as we talked about, you know, the videos that would be used. Uh, by then Sally will have completed, uh, she'll be well along with her program, CR and R will be well along with, uh, started for the Paris plant and the, the central video there. And we have a video, but this is standard distance to use, and so we need to, depending on how confused the public is, decide what, if anything, we can continue to use, uh, extend the, uh, the meat media. The next meeting is, it's always the first Thursday of the month, so it'll be the first Thursday in July and fifth Thursday in August. And also the, uh, talked about, the other issue we discussed about are, some cities are using yard signs, uh, but that, those cities, yard signs, you notice, you know, with the rollout of these kinds of programs. Um, we decided that would not work well for us because we're gonna do roll offs in various parts of the city.
You're talking about the hangers going out in the community. Uh, we're gonna be able to get one?
They're gonna be on the cart.
Well, we're gonna be able to get one before then, so if it's.
Uh, it's done. And I thought, I thought we told the board, so we'll move it over.
Uh, Javier, would you probably, just, just, are they done more? Yeah, they are, they've, they've been. They, they were reviewed by, by staff. And, and also they were reviewed at the organics committee meeting at various times.
So, let's, let's, uh, apparently the board members haven't seen it yet.
Oh.
They just heard me talk about them and. So, Javier, would you make one available at the board meeting? Or do you wanna quicker than that?
This, this is, I was gonna bring up.
This is a different.
And, and then I, I just drafted yesterday and was gonna give to Javier and Scott and company a second hanger that we're gonna be using, because once the program's rolled out, we're gonna have someone going and checking the organics cart, seeing how they're doing, and so this is gonna be a general piece, um, that will be then left. Sure, I have a few more.
I just think, make sure Ed knows about this, Ed, our code enforcement.
Okay.
He sees as much as you guys own the trash.
The recycling hanger? Yeah, I, I'm, I'm concerned about, I don't think people go out looking for organic carts, because we've been telling people in our, in the town meetings, about to be trash cops, and people are thinking you're trash cops and you're just these carts, so we're suggesting that.
Okay.
He's, he's, he's gonna come across, you know, potentially, and he's, and, um, people gathering because we're, they're more focused, but he, he, he should just continue his normal duties, which needs to pick up, or not.
So, we're all gonna get one of the.
Well, that was gonna be the recycling individual one, but the, the cart hanger that is going out on the rollout is actually a little bit different.
Okay.
Because it has an explanation of why they're receiving the cart, how to roll it out, things like that, whereas this is.
A little bit more of a program.
Yeah.
That's the one I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I can email that and have a copy for the board meeting.
Oh, that'd be great, you'd email it out.
Is that good enough, or you, well, email it out, you know, that's, that's a pretty physical one.
Just people are about so much.
We haven't actually received them, but they're the printers.
Oh, we have a, a tent.
We do have a tent.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, what's gonna happen to the old, when you pick up the old carts, do they go to cart evidence section here?
If they're reusable, we clean them, clean them up and we, we, we send them back out.
Uh, would it, give the ones that, because the sanitary just forgot them, you take that off or whatever?
No, we, we, we kept all those in this area.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't taken any of those logos off, actually, we are pretty much out of them, because most of the stuff we put out now, all of CR and R's.
Yeah.
So, the stuff that does come in, the Scott's, the Costa Mesa, Costa Mesa Sand District label, we'll keep, we'll clean up and keep and we'll redistribute.
You're, you're gonna see a increase in those, or people turn them.
Well, I think it's gonna be a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, you're gonna get a few more of those turned in.
Hey, we don't have any inventory now so far.
When's the contemporary, these not cohesive have three carts, start turning them out?
Well, I think wait and use your organic cart for a couple weeks or a month and see if, you know, protect yourself.
I thought it was a program.
You know, wait, wait, wait about two or three years and let it snow.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for Rob? Thank you for filling in for me, I would have rather been here in Sacramento, four hours in Sacramento. Okay, uh, item, item eight, project one oh one.
Uh, yeah, I'll talk, sorry, as you may recall, uh, last time we talked about this project, uh, we were talking about having Rob be the, uh, contract administrator, um, for the engineering design part of this project. Where the review of, graph the RFPs, publish the RFPs, uh, review of the RFPs, um, then once the contract is awarded by the board, then he would administer and make sure they follow through. What you have before you is Rob's proposal, it's a two year proposal, and I'll have, uh, Rob, a little more details on that stuff.
Yes, uh, thank you, Scott, there is quite a bit of work, I think we talked about the, the components of this, meaning that, we talked about there's seventeen permits that have to be obtained. There's a comprehensive design phase due to the number of pump stations being abandoned and the coordination for that. There's very sensitive work for drilling under Canyon Drive, uh, from end to end, and the traffic control and the liaison with the public. There is quite a bit of work and there are sub consultants, I did mention those last meetings, so expect the design phase fee from the consultant to be, um, somewhere above five hundred thousand. So, I think it, uh, we're, we're actually in a position where we could start anytime, we, I've got some RFPs and RFQs that I've reviewed, I have to talk to some consultants. I think it's a good approach by the board, I think that fee that you have there is reasonable, you happy to answer any questions?
Would this be going to the board meeting or for voters?
Yes, we'll take a second, if you're, if you're okay, we'll, we'll take it back, um, to the new board meeting to, um, get formal approval.
That would be my recommendation. Were we heard anything, uh, on the Fairview Trump line?
I was trying to estimate in my mind, you know, how long that will take, this is gonna, this is gonna take them months, you know, my suspicion is this will delay the project, please fix one.
Have, I have not made any inquiries to OCSD in regards to the timeframe of signing the MOU. Have you, do you know that they've put that on hold due to the Fairview Trump study?
No, I heard, I heard they put it on hold, but the senior for beach has some questions on the agreement, so they, they were gonna approve it last month, but then they delayed it, so, there's still discussions with, um, OCSD on the agreement. So, so the senior breach hasn't signed it yet.
Yeah, so this, you know, until they sign it.
They don't go, yeah, they don't go to OCSD, ask them to prove it.
Right, before they sign it, that they're gonna, they wanna have what, what, Fairview Trump line.
I, I, I know, I, I got the impression there's still one report with the agreement, um, and, um, the way to get the results of the, of the.
Yeah, the, the, everything is probably just to satisfy the environmental, because you do not have any bearing on the project, because the project is, you know, regional project.
Yeah, no, I know that, but when it originally started, that was, that was the reason, that, it's changed, but we need to remind them of that.
From our standpoint, we're happy to stay parallel with OCSD and what we have there is a similar timeframe to them, meaning it wouldn't take us the full six months to do RFQ, RFP. But OCSD has six months in their schedule and a year and a half in design in their schedule, so, we can, whatever the board's pleasure, we can wait and wait for them to get to a comfort level, if they're not. Or we can go a little bit ahead, I wouldn't recommend too much ahead, just wanna make sure everyone's in on everything, so, uh, whatever the board likes.
As long as all the agreements are signed, I mean, I think we're good, you know, but if they're not, so.
Yeah, I think the board should approve Rob's agreement and then nothing happens, you know, you don't, you don't.
Convention of.
We'll just sit on it, we'll have the board approve it, we'll wait to see, let's wait for the agreement to fully execute, I'll see if party, they're moving, uh.
Make a convention of.
You remember, I wanted them to put in that agreement and then to have, I mean, just they reimbursed us.
Well, no, I brought that up to, uh, Alan, and he hadn't heard that, so, I, I think we need to pursue that.
Well, we've already signed the agreement. Yeah, I'll look at it.
Well, Alan, Alan, I, well, I, he's, I was suspicious, wasn't he?
Yeah.
And then he looked at me like he had no idea what I was talking about.
I'm not so sure it's in there.
I'll look at it.
We've already, the board's already signed it, this board, and if that's not in there, then they back out, you know, we.
No, I'll look at it, I think it's in there.
Well, one of the good things for CMSD is that we did charge developer fees of one hundred thousand to nineteen oh one Newport Boulevard a few years ago, because they didn't have capacity and we were getting it through this project, so, we did recoup some of our fees already.
And that's included in the one oh one budget now, I have the money, and so.
I remember one of the city council members that did it, never mind, uh, okay, item, anything else for Rob? Uh, future study session items? Our, our name's going first.
Check out Corona, how we're coming on that, because it's complicated, I've got an idea, update.
Yeah, you know what, I mean, I think that's in July, you'll, we'll have our first ones out.
Yeah, okay, again, the other one was to, uh, activate more, I mean, how can we, we're trying a little, to kind of form ourselves of what we're doing on now, that we're, I think, some of the other, you know, how we're going about it.
I would like to see, uh, somebody called Mark, you sent him in to our meeting quarterly, talk to two members, could he come to a study session enough? Cause I'd like to see a more detailed explanation, verbal explanation, of where we're at financially and where we're putting our money, could, could he come in?
An explanation would be better.
Right, because we have a, we have one of those, I'll tell you, I mean, the detail, we, we bring.
I think we have one this month at the meeting that he'll go through it, and so maybe that.
He does, he does record it at the board meeting.
I know, but we, he asked us for any questions, normally we don't have any questions, I was thinking that, we take time, he goes through every one, and then since the, the study session, we're not gonna vote on it, we just. I think that'd be live for me, cause I haven't really heard it, he, if the fee says, if my report has any questions, then nobody says anything, so now we get a chance to tell him whatever he's doing, and I would like to do that.
Yeah.
Take, you know, fifteen minutes or so.
So, he, he'll do the quarterly this month when he does a little more, and then if that's not what you want, then he can come back to the study session.
The next quarterly, we're doing a study.
Yeah, and you can, you can expand on it.
Instead of have a meeting with two members prior to the meeting, like we used to do, he takes fifteen, twenty minutes, explains that, that we're at. Yeah, we did accordingly with two members prior to, before the meeting started. And it's, to do it in a study session, I mean, for more details, we can expand it financially, like, where we have now compared to a couple years ago.
And also, don't forget to chamber, address the chamber of commerce, please, do anything.
I won't be able to. I got that, congratulations to the doctor, I usually help them set up the chairs. Is that your, is that the one in the fair coming?
Yeah.
Not that it's for you.
Yeah.
Doug coming or somebody, some new person?
Oh, there's a new person coming, but that's not contagious, too.
I don't like the animal, but anything, um, I had two things, Scott, um, this thing that happened last weekend up in Ultra Deena, Glendale, with senior, SSO senior, all SSO. I, could we take a look at, there's a lot of senior facilities in Costa Mesa, including this, the new one, Azamal. I know from experience recently with my father in law, the person stays there, I mean, old people put a lot of stuff down the sewers and I, I have no doubt that that's what happened up in Glendale or wherever it was. So, can we, and, and I, this isn't something you have to jump right on, but let's take a look at what we have in terms of senior living facilities and, and Costa Mesa and what they might have dug in through the sewers.
We know there was, there was, we just, like, EC and Rob helped us on this, when there was one, this living that were, people was, was forcing catheters down the sewers.
Well, I've never talked about that.
And I did on your weekly report, you saw the picture of the catheter. And, and actually we had the, actually we got the VA that got involved in that, the VA got involved in that, um, with the assistant C D, and they went and talked to them, so.
That's just the catheters, I know that, there's disposable things that I'm sure they're not taking care of, they're just washing them.
We have our no white flyer that can easily go out at any time, the, we made it generic, so it's, well, we, we tailored it to a certain area when we need that, we have it in general format, too.
This, this thing was, I don't know if any of you saw it on the news, but Scott, it was, you know, helicopters flying over and ambulances, they had like forty ambulances lined up moving people, I don't know, I don't know.
They also, we, people find, they collect a lot of things that, you know, that group, you're not yet be aware of, you know, use drugs and, um. They can, or use drugs, and, um, corindus, and, at least they should have notices on their bulletin boards or something that they're sort of, that they're.
And the Asamals right across the street from you, that's a good point. And then the other thing I had, and this is probably something, this is gonna be down the line, but, um, if we get closer to probably the water district approving this deciding program, I think we need to be aware of how that, because this is gonna barrel right through Costa Mesa, and we probably need to have some discussion about how that, any of that B-South stuff is gonna affect our lives.
Well, city insurance may have had conversations with them about that.
I think the lines are already in, I think, for, they're gonna use the Costa Mesa lines to move it down south. That's why they want. I thought they were gonna put new lines, couldn't they?
I, I, I've heard both.
Yeah, I think Wendy told me, Wendy literally, they were gonna, it's gonna be a lot of new lines put in, and just how it might interact with us. Just something to look at, because this is gonna be a line.
That could be, it's a clear, it's a lay of the nation, I could be a, that role of, you know.
Did they take that?
They have a lay of the nation.
What happened to that stuff? The lay of the nation got canceled.
Yeah, yeah.
What happened?
It, it's got canceled. Why did we cancel it? Yeah, well, I've got, I've got, um, uh, I mean, I can't, maybe, um, I'm probably, um, direct favorite thing, and that, you know, as well, I think it's.
Okay, so we're, it's more on our part, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I thought maybe we could have a turn, we want to be, be. Do you remember, is that, I'm supposed to, are you doing a second one?
No, I'm just, I'm actually, I think you have a phone call.
I didn't, now that, I forgot about, I'm gonna, I'm on those committees, yeah, 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 I'm gonna do a phone call. No, no, I, I, I have them, I'm gonna do it on.
No, you have your own phone?
No, I have.
So, it's, it's actually here, and it's gonna be water district. Is that, is that? We can still do it.
We're still doing it.
Okay, I thought, I thought I saw, it's gonna be another.
I'd, I'd really like to bring up our new building that we're looking at for the city, since the mayor isn't sure why we're buying a building.
Well, we brought their flash, the high.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was.
I knew you did.
I think the mayor was there, the mayor wasn't there.
No.
But you should read the report. Are we being recorded?
Yeah.
Good. Anything else? Do you have a camera? Bob? I don't know, that's, that's, the mic's gone off. That's not great. All right, thank you all, good evening.
Very good.
So, we'll, seven thirty, with, uh, cop, uh, cop.